Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez-Tolakia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Shawdei Fashukun.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
All right, it is 6:15 PM and I am calling our Board Workshop to order. This is not a regular meeting, so you'll notice we have somewhat of abbreviated agenda. The very next item on our agenda this evening is Citizen Comments. We'll go ahead and roll our video before we introduce Citizen Comments before we get started.
The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, my mother's favorite child, as they pursue their mission to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Common Agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. The District believes the Leander family thrives and ensures a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED locals specify guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The Board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you're presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in the Board meetings, either by watching them or you might see some in the audience. And the Board President calls your number. Remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be difficult, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, Speaker Number One.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Black and I have two little ones at Baghdad Elementary. So I just wanted to come and chat with y'all. I know you're aware of all of the growth in the north of our district. Baghdad is at overcapacity at like 100% right now and growing at about 20% each year. So I think it's really important to take into consideration the rezoning of elementary schools as well. I know that on your agenda tonight, you're talking about middle school and secondary, but I think it's also important to talk about our elementary schools and how to utilize spaces that we already have. We have about nine schools that are 80% or below in utilization in our district, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there for us to take advantage of that space. You know, I was able to visit Westside Elementary a couple of weeks ago, and because they have all of that extra space, they're actually doing really great things for their kids. They have a leadership space that they can use. They got a grant for a STEM area that they're starting in robotics. So those kind of spaces can be used for that school because they have it. Baghdad, we have no more space. We have no extra space to do those kind of programs for kids. And I think it's something that all kids could take advantage of if we just were able to give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number One. Okay, I'm confirming that's it for speakers. Do you have speaker two? Okay. Okay. All right, that will conclude our Citizen Comments. We will now be moving to the next item on our agenda, our discussion items. Board members, I'm going to, I'll kind of pitch in a bit as we're moving along, but pretty much it's the annual demographic report for 2022 is going to kick us off, and we're going to be looking at the next three items through this lens. So Dr. Gering is actually going to be leading us more through these discussions as we move through each of these agenda items. So Dr. Gering, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. It's a great honor and privilege to welcome population and survey analysts from College Station here tonight, Dr. Stacy Tapera, Tiffany Thomas Rogers, and Angela Fritz. And they're going to lead us through our annual demographic update. They've been doing demographic updates for the District for an extended amount of time. They know the District well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tapera. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. We are happy to be back. We have two new faces for you tonight, new to you but not new to us. Angela Fritz will be speaking tonight on the housing projections that Pat Guzman used to speak to you about in years past. And so with that, we will begin. So to start off, we are looking at data that we received from TEA. This is last year's data because it's snapshot data for the whole state. And so the PIM snapshot enrollment date, enrollment data has not been released for the entire state yet for this year. So we have to look at last year's just to get an idea about where Leander ISD falls relative to the other districts within the Austin metro area. So the third largest with 41,780 students enrolled, this was last fall. This fall, we're up to about 42,600 or so. Now, again, last year, there had been a growth of 1,400 students in Leander ISD, and that was the highest growth of the Austin metro districts. Over the last five years, ending last year, that was a gain of 3,500 students, 3,554, which again is the fastest-growing district in the Austin metro area. Now, some of the demographic characteristics of the district as it compares to the Austin metro. Not surprisingly, I think you guys all kind of know intuitively that the educational level of the residents in this district is higher than the Austin metro in general, and the median home value and median income are higher than the Austin metro at large. But interestingly, for this audience, the school-aged population is a bigger proportion of the population than in the Austin metro area. Now, in, this graph is a little bit difficult to understand, and it's a little busy, but what I want you to look at is the blue bars. So these bars represent the growth in elementary student population each year, all the way back to 2002. Now, the blue bars, you can see the peak that was growing, 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 not just growing, but accelerating through the early years of the 2000s. And then it began, the enrollment at the elementary level, the growth at the elementary level, decelerated to a smaller amount of growth through the teen years. And then we started to see an increase again in 2019. And those of you that were here in 2019, you all looked at me and you said, is this the beginning of the regeneration? And everybody was really excited. And I said, I don't know. It could be, or it could be just a blip, because blips happen. Well, not just a blip, but COVID happened. And so we can't make any, draw any conclusions about what that increase meant in 2019 because the next two years, and even this year, the third year, are continuously impacted by the impacts on enrollment that the COVID, that the pandemic had. So we can look at kindergarten enrollment compared to births to mothers in Leander ISD five years prior. So the bottom line is the number of births that happens in, within the district boundaries, and the blue line is the enrollment five years later, presumably of those babies. And the difference between the two lines represents the in-migration of families with children that have already been born but have not started kindergarten yet. Dr. Gering?
Yeah, sorry. Can you go back to the blue bars because I just want to be sure that people understand that this is enrollment change?
Yes.
And not enrollment because that makes a big difference, right?
Absolutely.
So when you see that big bar in '21, '22, it's really just those kids who disappeared in '20.
That's correct.
That came back, but not even.
But notice that the negative bar in 2020 is longer than the positive bar in 2021. Right. So that means that not all of the elementary, I mean, elementary-aged kindergarten students returned in '21.
Right.
Compared to those that left in 2020.
Yeah, so the overall number is still actually declining slightly at that elementary age level.
Yes. Okay, so back to kindergarten versus births. The difference in these two lines represents the families that moved into the district with preschool-aged students. So we see that, of course, the big dip in 2020 in kindergarten enrollment due to the pandemic did not mirror the births, right? There had been a predictable number of births five years prior. But then we see a return of some of those kindergarten population the next year. But importantly, on the right side of the dotted line represents the increase in births that have happened over the past four years, and those kindergarten students haven't shown up yet. They have not yet aged into the school system. And so we can expect some increase in the kindergarten population based solely on births that have happened over the past four years. Now, the first thing that we start with in these studies is where are the current students living right now? So we get a file from the District with the addresses of all of the students, and we place every student on the map based on his or her address. The green dots that you see represent the current students where they live now. The blue dots represent where students lived five years ago. So importantly, the only place that you see green dots are where no students lived five years ago. And so clearly, the north part of the district has gained the most population. And this is just to sort of illustrate where we begin with our geocoding process. This is the starting point for our projections. Now, all of those students are placed on a map on the parcel where they live, and we can use that geocoded information to estimate the number of, or the ratio of students per occupied home throughout the district. District-wide and single-family homes, the average ratio is .54 students per home. That's if you had 100 homes, you would have 54 Leander ISD-enrolled students living in them. Now, that varies wildly by neighborhood. That .54 is just the district average. For example, Steiner Ranch has about .9 students per home, and Treviso has about .39 students per home. So there are big differences, but it's important for us to understand the student density of each of these subdivisions so that we can then apply comparables to the new construction that's happening and study what is it about this subdivision that makes it have a high or a low ratio of students per home and apply that to the new construction. At the multifamily level, the apartment complexes, about .27 students per occupied unit. That is very typical for a suburban school district like this. This chart shows the change in population over the past year and where that growth or decline happened. So the first row shows that in built-out subdivisions that did not add any new homes, we actually saw a decline in student population of 644 students. This is largely driven by the built-out concentration of aging homes that have not yet begun to regenerate. However, again, I referred to 2019 as a potential rebirth of this young population. We did see some of this reversal of this decline in built-out areas in 2019. And again, we can't take, make any great conclusions about that because of COVID, but we are seeing some turnaround of the decline in built-out subdivisions, some regeneration in those areas. 94% of the growth that happened this year happened in actively building subdivisions, which is not surprising, and the other 6% happens in apartment complexes. Now, the, every year, we study the enrollment of residents of Leander ISD who are not enrolled in Leander ISD, who are enrolled in either charter schools or private schools. We get asked all the time about the homeschool population, and we don't have any data for you for homeschool population because they're not tracked by TEA and they're not required to submit anything with TEA. And so we have no way to find all-inclusive holistic information about homeschooling. However, for private schools, we conduct phone calls to all of the private schools that we have identified, pull students from Leander ISD, and we ask them, what's your enrollment and about how many of those students do you estimate to come from Leander ISD? So this data is not, not as clear-cut as the data that we can derive, but it's a base, it's a basic estimate that we can use. So based on those phone calls, we do see some increase in private school enrollment over the past four or five years, pulling students from Leander ISD. Those are the gray lines. The maroon lines are the charter school enrollment, which we get from TEA, so that data is much more clear-cut. And indeed, we have seen an increase in charter school enrollment of residents living within Leander ISD. So let's talk about charter schools. This table shows you the charter schools that pull the most students out of Leander ISD. And about, in 2018, about 1,000 or so residents of Leander ISD attended charter schools. Currently, about 2,000 residents of Leander ISD attend charter schools. But importantly, these five charter schools are planning an expansion of a school close to or within the Leander ISD boundaries. And so the addition of these five campuses pulling students out of Leander ISD over the next five years could mean that about 4,200 students could be living in Leander ISD and attending these charter schools. Now, we know that the students that attend charter schools do so within a very small radius of their home. In other words, students attending charter schools live within a mile or two of those schools in general. We now can get data from TEA showing where those kids' home campus would be if they weren't attending this charter school. And on this map, this is a heat map, showing that Parkside pulls over, charter schools pull over 100 students out of the Parkside Elementary attendance zone, and Whitestone is between 75 and 100 students. Founders has, well, you can't see my pointer. The yellow dot next to the word Pleasant Hill is the Founders' location in Leander. That pulls students from both Parkside and Whitestone, well, from all of the areas, as well as Meridian is located in Georgetown just east off of this map, but it also pulls a significant population from Parkside. But, so the yellow dots are the existing charter schools, but the red dots with a yellow halo are the new charter schools that are being planned that I just referred to. There are only four on this map because Valor has not yet announced its location, but we, they were considering a site along I-35. So we have not assumed that that will have as big of an impact on Leander ISD because of proximity. But the other four, Great Hearts, Basis, Idea, and Harmony, are all planning locations within the Leander ISD. And so our projections have projected a pull, a decline of students that otherwise would have been in Leander ISD schools. Here we go. And now I will turn it over to Angela to talk about the housing projections, and then I will talk a little bit more at the end about the student projection model.
Well, good evening. We're going to start just by talking about a little bit of the context that we look at as we view the housing projections over the next 10 years. Everybody's probably sick and tired of talking about the economy and hearing about the roller coaster we're all on right now, but I just want to point out a couple big-picture things that affect this study here this evening. So we know that employment returned to its pre-pandemic levels in the greater Austin area by about April of 2021. So jobs came back quickly, and job growth also remains strong here in the Austin area, so that is a good sign. From a broader economic outlook standpoint, nationally, we are all on a little bit of the roller coaster with the Fed and the raising interest rates. We've raised the base rate six times now since March, and we do anticipate, and the Fed has signaled, that they will continue to raise that base rate until inflation is under control. The big question right now still is the looming fear of a recession. Are we going to enter recession? When will that happen? How long will that last? The outcome for us here this evening is really the effect on the mortgage rates. And on the next slide, we'll just look very quickly at what those numbers look like for an average median home price here in Leander ISD. So the housing market generally very robust in '20 and '21. We are seeing signs that the market is cooling across the state and in Austin. Home prices are beginning to moderate, we know, in the Austin metro area. So the median closed price for a single-family home is still up from a year previous at about 470,000, but the median price per square foot for single-family homes has dropped subtly since its peak in April of this year. So those indicators are all coming back down. Sales for September are down about 19% year-over-year, another indication of a cooling market. And then housing inventories are also coming back up. They've tripled to just a little over three months as of September. It's still shy of six months or six and a half months. It's considered a balanced market, but they're coming up pretty quickly approaching that. So just things to keep in mind as we look at the housing projections overall. Just a little tangible example of the effect of increased mortgage rates on a 30-year fixed mortgage. Your average median home value here, according to the 2020 American Community Survey, was 332. We can nudge that up a little bit because of the price increases. If we consider 350 the median home price in Leander ISD, and we look at the difference from 3% to 7%, you are looking at about $700 a month just on principal and interest, not even taxes and insurance. So we're looking at about $8,000 to $9,000 a year, somebody looking to purchase a first-time home or get into a home that's going to take a considerable number of folks out of the market. So just something to keep in mind there. We're going to hop right into housing. Just a note as we proceed, these are just housing projections. These are not your students from new housing. Stacy will talk about when I finish up how our housing kind of translates into your growth scenario. So overall, for single-family housing in Leander ISD, we are projecting just over 21,000 new occupancies in the next decade, basically. That's about 54% of your total projections. A couple larger trends. Your master-planned communities will continue to be the biggest influencers. So Treviso, Bryson, Parkside on the River, they're projected to be some of the largest drivers of growth. We do see a good bit of kind of infill, smaller developments, but also a little more dense in terms of townhomes and condos potentially in the central district. And then there is continued or renewed signs of development in both the east off of County Road 175, some subdivisions getting going in that area that weren't in previous studies, and some indicators that development may begin on the western edge of the district as well. So just an overall look, this comes from estimates of our past studies and our future projections for Leander ISD. We want to look at just a few of the trends for single-family housing. So we do see a bit of a drop-off in year one from about 2550 estimated occupancies in this past year. We're looking at about 2,200 estimated single-family occupancies this next year. A lot of that has to do with us really dampening some of the single-family projections because of the uncertainty of the mortgage rates. So we haven't necessarily extended that across the full projection period, but we do think there will be a short-term effect on some developments here in the district. So that's the main difference for that little bit of decrease or correction in 2023. There is some, because of the compression and the market being so accelerated during the pandemic, there's also kind of a correction in terms of lots coming back online and being ready to have houses go on them as well. But this is the overall look, again, just for the single-family in the district. So this is a heat map of the same development, the single-family projected occupancies through 2032. We're going to talk about, these are by neighborhood code, so we're going to talk about kind of the dark red ones here. And you see that those are mainly concentrated in the northern half of the district. You see some projected occupancies in the northwest. A lot of that is stuff that's actually beginning in the latter half of the projection period. And we know that the later we get in the projection period, the more kind of uncertainties there are and the more variables can affect that development. But you also see the red neighborhood codes there in the northeast as well. And when Stacy talks about the projections, you'll see how that plays out there. So. So anything listed on this map is greater than, it's active or planned and greater than 50 units. There's a lot of different developments ongoing or planned across the district, and you have full details of all that in your report as well. So for multifamily housing overview, we're projecting just over 18,000 multifamily occupancies over the planning period. It's about 40% of your total. Just over 10% of your current students reside in multifamily units, and about 46% of the future housing, as we just talked about, is in planned multifamily. So there are 14 apartment complexes that are currently under construction in the district. We project or estimate that there's another 22 that are planned. So those are developments that we know about, that we think will be upcoming in the shorter term. And then we've also projected an additional 24 probable developments. So we know as districts mature, there's a greater demand for that sort of housing as infill. We also know there's several large mixed-use developments within Leander ISD that have been talked about for several years, and a couple of those have begun development. Some of that was slowed in the pandemic, and it's picked back up. So North Line has its first, first units are under construction right now, so development has started there. Bell District also has some of its first units underway. And then Leander Springs, Indigo Ridge North, and Indigo Ridge South, as well as High Point at 2222, which is the current name for the former 3M campus in the far south of the district, are all areas that we are projecting future multifamily. So we'll look at a heat map quickly of where these multifamily projected occupancies are. Again, this is the 10 years, and anything in the deep, deep, deep red is more than 500 units projected for the neighborhood code. Not surprisingly, these follow along, you know, particular corridors in the district, 183, 1431 and Whitestone, and then headed west, Hero Way. A lot of that is future planned as those areas begin to develop further west in the district later in the projection period. And with that, the overall projections, you can see here on the screen, your single-family is in green and your multifamily in gold. We do project the peak for single-family right now to be about 2025, 2026. So you would see those students enroll the next year. And then multifamily really peaks right now, kind of the year after that, about 26, 27, as a lot of those larger mixed-use areas potentially come into play in the district. So total, we're projecting 40,266 additional housing units through October of 2032 for Leander ISD. And I'm going to hand it back to Stacy, and she'll take it from here.
Thank you. Okay, as you've heard, housing projections, new housing, is the biggest factor that contributes to projected growth and where that growth is going to happen. It's the biggest driver of growth. But we take into account a lot of other things. I touched briefly on birth rates and changes in those birth rates within the district and how that impacts the incoming kindergarten class size. So pre-pandemic, your kindergarten was growing at about 5% to 8% annually. And so we can anticipate that that can continue once things stabilize a little bit more. The aging of the existing student population is important because if there's a big third grade class, just because that's just the way things happen, sometimes there's a big bulge in the population, then that bulge will age on through, and it will cause increased enrollment at the middle school in a few years and at the high school later. The regeneration of existing neighborhoods is always a wild card because we know that the homes that that have families, that their students have aged out, have graduated and moved out, those empty nesters will not live in those homes forever. They will eventually sell those homes to younger families, and they will regenerate with with younger students in the in the schools. When that happens is a wild card because a lot of people like their homes and like their neighborhoods and like their communities, and they don't want to move out. And so we watch these trends every year and 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 project for, yes, some regeneration happening in these older homes. But until we see real, clear changes and increases, we can't project a whole, whole lot in those in those areas in good conscience until we can justify it. Dr. Gearing?
And I assume it's kind of like the kindergarten births, right? So until you see a couple of years of it, really, you can't predict whether it's just the one-year blip or if it's a trend, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Bulges happen. And so we talked also about new charter schools coming in, and that can have a big impact on specific schools within the district. And then there's always the pandemic-related loss. So in the past, we have been here talking about how much of the COVID-related loss we anticipate to return. And in in previous years, we had anticipated a lot of return, 75% or, and then the next year maybe a little bit less. But we have found that by and large, that pandemic-related loss has not fully materialized and returned to public schools in this situation. And so our projections here, hereforth have just moved that needle down a little bit with the with the anticipated growth still being the same, but the starting point is just a little bit less than it had been in years, years past. Yes?
With regard to regeneration, this is a difficult one to project in good times, in stable times.
Yes, it is.
In unstable times, it's very, very difficult, I think, to pinpoint. But to what degree are you all able to look at the rapid appreciation in home values in conjunction with the rising interest rates, which would appear, at least in the near-to-medium term, to make it very difficult for regeneration to occur?
With younger families, absolutely, yes. And and we can, we can look at trends, but gosh, my crystal ball is a little, little cloudy.
Yeah. And yet, I think the data is there to at least do some analysis in terms of, I don't know, the the profile of a family who could move into a particular neighborhood. I think there are a lot of neighborhoods in our community that may never be affordable for regeneration like they were for the families who moved in there initially. There are other parts of our community where that seems more possible over time. Do you all have a lens or a vehicle that would help you to pinpoint that for us or help us to target that? It's going to be an important analytical lens for us going forward.
We can certainly add it to the analysis. We, we don't look really minutely at those kinds of things, but we do look globally. And and because of, as you say, the the worst of times makes makes a lot of fluctuation. So there's a lot of noise within that data. And so I can't draw any really clear conclusions at this point, but we will continue to to narrow that focus and and add a more robust analysis as things kind of settle.
I was wondering if if the the movement of large tech companies into the area, I know Samsung's and Taylor, that's not that far of a drive for us. And so I wonder if maybe some of that regeneration would come from families that would maybe, you know, be coming in for those tech jobs. You know, we're talking Samsung and Apple and all of those one, the biggies that are coming here, you know, may maybe not want to live in Austin and and may sort of, you know, kind of backfill some of those, some of those single-family homes.
Certainly, certainly. Okay, so let's move along to our three scenarios of growth. We develop a low-growth, a moderate-growth, and a high-growth scenario. Our moderate growth is what we consider the most likely scenario in that if if everything happens as we think it's most likely to happen, then the district could see 51,000 students at the end of this 10-year projection period. The low-growth and the high-growth scenario are both very real possibilities, assuming any of a number of factors change. So if two or three new charter schools move into the area and pull even more students out of Leander ISD, then we could be looking at a low-growth scenario. The city of Leander has has begun to discuss some potential limitations on residential development. If that were to become a reality, or if some kind of a moratorium eventually became a reality, then that could contribute to a low-growth scenario. Likewise, a high-growth scenario could happen if, say, the interest rates go down and we start seeing construction rates at the at the rate that we did earlier in this year prior to about June, then then we could certainly be looking at a high-growth scenario. So when we talk about these global numbers by the district-wide numbers overall, that is important for the financial people to plan for. But when we are talking about where students are going to go to school, the geography of where that growth is projected to happen is important. And so, again, you're looking at another heat map that's very similar to the ones that you've seen before for housing, but this represents the number of elementary students added to each of these neighborhood codes. And the importance of where those are relative to the attendance zone gives you an idea of where those students are going to show up. So our speaker earlier this evening talked about the overcrowding at Baghdad, and you can see that Baghdad has a big red blotch in it, right? So Baghdad is projected to grow largely at the end of this projection period. But again, Tarvin is a big recipient of those high-growth areas. That attendance zone incorporates a lot of the high-growth neighborhoods, neighborhood codes, as well as Aiken and and all of the the three schools up in the the very top of the district, Larkspur, North, and Plain. Now, what does this mean as far as numbers of aggregated students? So I started with Baghdad. Over 10 years, we anticipate that Baghdad could have an additional 900 students added to the population living in that attendance zone. So that's another elementary school just to relieve Baghdad. We see that Plain North and Larkspur all have between 400 and 500 additional students, but the winner of all is Tarvin with 1,500 additional elementary students projected over the 10-year projection period. So right now, let's look at next year and the utilization levels of each of these schools under these projections. So in general, most of the schools are in a good manageable range. Camacho and Rutledge are both a little over 120% utilization, followed by Larkspur and Plain at just under 120% utilization. 10 years forward, however, everything turns red in the north, right? And that's the growth that I was just explaining to you. So Tarvin, for example, is expected to have 288% utilization. That means 2.8 students for every seat or almost three elementary student, schools to serve the current Tarvin Elementary Attendance Zone. But what does that mean temporally? When when is that overcrowding projected to happen? So these are the red and blue color scheme that you are used to seeing, in that red means overcrowding of over 120% utilization, and blue means less than 80% utilization. So it's important to remember that, so these red lines illustrate sort of the priorities of where, who's going to be overcrowded first, largely in the north, Lark, Larkspur and Plain and Pleasant Hill and Tarvin in the next few years. But importantly, also are the blue schools in the central part and central and south part of the district. And you're going to hear a little bit more about the district's plan to 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 better utilize that existing capacity and in order to hopefully be able to postpone some of the new construction. So at the middle school level, we see the same sort of outline of or configuration of growth in the north. Danielson and Stiles are both projected to gain the most students over 10 years. The utilization this year at Danielson and Stiles is just about between 100 and 115% utilization this next fall. But 10 years out, that grows to almost 200%. So Danielson at 200% and Stiles at 175% utilization. So that illustrates clearly the need for a middle school in the northern part of the district to relieve those two schools. When does that overcrowding become an issue? Under the current attendance zones, about 2024. That's not next fall, but the next. And 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 followed by, and that would be, that Stiles reaching that overcrowding in 2024, followed by Danielson in '25. So under the current attendance zones, that would be when ideally a another middle school might need to come online. And finally, at the high school level, again, the same configuration of growth in the north, Glen and Rouse both projected to exceed or to grow over 1,000 students. Is that twin? I can't read it from here. Lots of growth in the north. Yes, yes, 1,800 students in Glen and 1,200 students in Rouse over, added to the population over the next 10 years. In next year, Glen is is filling up quickly. We're at just about 100% utilization already, and Vista Ridge at about 113%. But in 10 years, clearly the need in the north for additional high school space in order to relieve Glen and Rouse at 170% and 136% utilization respectively. And again, the the red bars illustrate the timing of this overcrowding. So Glen is projected to exceed 120% utilization. That's 3,000 students in Glen projected by fall of 2025, under the current attendance zones, followed by Rouse in 2028. So the next items on the agenda that you will hear are ways that the that we have worked with the administration and the administration has worked to develop ideas for how to accommodate this projected growth.
For members, questions?
Ask questions.
To confirm, the projected rates that you're showing us are assuming the moderate growth.
Yes, these are all moderate growth scenario.
I like that you were talking about the charter school. You know, this past week, I spent four days at El Tasbe, and it was interesting to hear from school districts across the state who went through this fast growth, and a lot of charters have moved in. And now they're looking at schools that they built, and they're like, we're going to open a brand-new school that took us, you know, for three years to build, but in the meantime, there was three new charters, and we're going to open the school, and it's not, we really don't need it anymore. And and so I do think that we have to think through, because we don't want to be on that other side in, you know, five to 10 years of building new schools, and knowing the reality is there's going to be proliferation of additional charters. And and then we're going to be, you know, have buildings that we're not using and taxpayers have paid for, so.
It is important for us to monitor the plans of these charter systems because these big systems like Idea and Basics and Great Hearts, they they have a charter, and so then they can file an amendment to that charter with TEA to say, we plan to open an additional building, and it's going to be somewhere in Williamson County. Sometimes they're that unspecific, sometimes they're very specific. And so we follow those amendments very carefully, and and we call each of the charter schools and try to get any information we can from from anyone who will talk to us about where those new buildings are planned. And so we feel pretty good about knowing where these four or five new buildings are going to be in the next few years. Another issue that comes up sometimes is that rather than buying a parcel of land and building and building a new building, sometimes the systems will start by renovating and renting a an empty commercial space, you know, a former grocery store or something, and start using that space for classrooms for the first few years, and then they'll build a building after that. So we we try to keep up with all of that as best we can.
Do they have big enough numbers to make a huge dent for high school? Or is it mainly just elementary school and a bit of middle school for the charters?
So the the four that are opening now, four of the five, are planning eventually to have high school grades. And some of them open only with elementary grades, and then they just add a grade each year. And some of them open, say, with kindergarten through second and then sixth grade, and then they add a grade each year. I think one of them is opening with K nine, and so then they will, within three years, have a full high school complement. The deceiving part is that as these elementary charters open up and start with elementary students, they they pull the students from the system, or sometimes they don't, these kindergarteners never enroll in in Leander ISD, so we never even know that they were here. But but especially as they age into the older grades, they were never enrolled in Leander, and so we don't know that they're gone. It's just that they they would otherwise be enrolled here if they weren't in charters. So yes, to answer your question, the the high schools, at least these four that we are anticipating, will have high school grades as well.
Yeah, but the numbers, I'm just looking at the numbers. When you look at, we're looking at Glenn, say, having over 3,000 students. How big of a pool can a charter school have for high school grades?
Not big enough to handle that. And we've already taken those out.
Okay.
And those are already pulled from the 3,000.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any information on the economics or demographics or information on the people who are transferring or moving into our community?
Do you mean transferring or do you mean moving in?
Moving in.
Okay. We can look at at the annual American Community Survey data that is census data to look at changes. But it it's, again, it's kind of, it's kind of diluted in that the number of families moving in is a small proportion of the number of families that already live there. And so it's it's hard to see these kinds of small changes on a year-to-year basis. But we can look at housing values and sales values and so forth, and that that kind of information.
I guess my my question was, as we were watching for regeneration, you're assuming a similar population. So if, you know, older generations move out, regeneration happens when your younger populations move in. But if you have a demographic that's completely different, say, from California moving into the area, that may impact how regeneration may happen in various communities. But I'm not really sure how many of our, how much of our population from Leander area is coming from outside with maybe higher priced homes and might be able to easily purchase some of the houses that are available.
I just need clarification on the projected single-family occupancy slide for the decade. Is that the number of homes that you expect to contribute to Leander ISD or just the number of homes that are going to be added?
The number of homes located within the Leander ISD boundaries that will be added. And then we apply a ratio of students per home based on each neighborhood's characteristics to estimate how many Leander ISD students will be yielded from those homes.
Okay, I, is there going to be more? I thought in the next decade, there's going to be more than 336 homes in Treviso. I I might be wrong, but I just thought that it was more than that.
So that slide shows just the portion of Treviso that's in that land use zone that adds up to more than 500. But in your total housing projection sheet, Treviso's spread into several different sections. And let me see if I can get that number for you offhand. So there there will be more than the 336, you're correct.
Basically, she's saying that Treviso spans several neighborhood codes.
So Bruce, one of the things I'm thinking about is our key six meetings where we met with the cities and we're talking to the city, City of Cedar Park and Leander and the permits that they're seeing come in and where they're seeing residents come in from and from what parts of the country. I'm curious, do you have any other insights or thoughts as we get ready to wrap up this agenda item that you want us to keep in mind as we move into our next items?
No, I don't think so. I think this has been a comprehensive review of of what we know. This is the data that we're used to. We're going to jump next into how this fits then with long-range planning. And we're doing that a little differently this year. And Dr. Tepper has been great working with us and helping us to plan that at a very local level. And so that's the next piece that we'll jump into, and that will possibly probably generate more questions, I think.
So board members, if there aren't any other questions, we'll move into the next one, which is discussion of updates to the 10-year long-range plan.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Yes, lots of late night reading material here.
All right, good evening. I hope you don't mind if I come here, I just much prefer to see your faces. I can't wait to stop talking. Okay. Yeah. He's going to adjust some things and is going to stop echoing in just a second, so I'm going to keep talking, hopefully. We'll see. And should be some slides in a second, so in the meantime. No, no. I do want to recognize first our board members who've worked on the Long Range Planning Committee because they've done extensive work based on the 2021 demographic update that we got from Passa last year, then took that data and worked a long plan. And then we're going to talk about how does this data affect that plan? And and we've already met again last week with that same group to talk again about what does that do? And so thank you to Alexis Grimes and to Erin Johnson and to Anna Smith for the extensive amount of work they've done, along with Laura Lynn Artaberry and her team, to make all of that happen. So we always start with kids, and so we have to remember that as we talk about houses and units and ratios and numbers and all of these things, it comes back down to kids and how do we educate the kids that come to us as public school? We take all of them, regardless of where they live, as long as they're inside the boundaries, and we accept them and we take them as they are. And then our job is to educate them. And so we'll continue to to do that as we go forward. I also want to say a very big thank you to all kinds of things going on, to Jimmy and to Marty, and both of them are right here. They have put countless hours into running a lot of background data and a lot of information that's helped us to generate ideas and to have these conversations as we go forward. And so what we're going to do tonight is not at the level of detail that they work at, right? And so we're going to look over at the top of it and what vision and what policy decisions does it cause us to ask questions about and to make as we go forward. But we're not necessarily going to dive into the level of detail. But I do want you to know and understand that they have dug very deep. They've run countless scenarios, time after time after time, as we ask different questions to try to see what happens if, what happens if, what happens if. And and you'll see the result of a lot of that, but you won't see a lot of that data here tonight. You have access to all of that data if you wanted. We're happy to share that and walk you through it as as time permits, but I don't want to do that tonight. So I want to make sure that we stay at the right level so that we can understand the big concept and the difficult decisions and challenges that we face as we go forward. I want to start, I think, with a picture. And the way that we do that in the past has been to call bond elections. All of those things that we do. And it's important then to understand where we are in terms of what does the, oh, they brought the big guns in now. So it's important for us to understand what does that look like in terms of the election environment in the state as a whole, and then specifically here in Leander ISD because we've just had that election on November 8. And so I do want to just run through some of that. On November 8, there were about $15.4 billion worth of bonds from school districts on the ballot. Those were on multiple propositions because of the way that the law is now, we have to split those into multiple propositions. Only about 56% of those propositions passed. So that's an important thing to realize. On the flip side of that, a lot of the propositions that passed were the high dollar propositions and then some of the lower dollar propositions that were, a lot of them athletics and fine arts that have to are forced onto separate propositions now, are the ones that didn't pass. So about 12, a little over 12 billion of that 15.4 billion passed is about 78%. So keep that in mind as we continue to talk. It's important also to realize, though, that some of those propositions passed with very narrow margins, and that is becoming more and more common. So the days of 60, 70, 80% passage rates for for bond elections, for sure, I think are somewhat behind us. Austin ISD might be the exception, and we're actually in conversation with them right now to try to figure out what exactly happened for them because right prior to the election, they were concerned that they weren't going to pass at all. And then they had about 70% passage rate on on their very large bond that was on November 8. Let's go a little bit more local now and look at our election. And I think it's important for us to really be honest and to really talk about what this looks like and 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 what it says to us. And so if you just look at the margins on on board elections, and then on the next slide, we're going to look at the propositions as well, there's not necessarily a clear mandate from our community about what they want. I just want us to pay attention to the fact that there are lots of people in our community who don't necessarily agree with each other, and we just have to pay attention to that fact. You can see it here specifically on Proposition B. I think Proposition A is a little different because of the nature of what an A selection is and the communication that we were able to do, I think, about the fact that this is just a mechanism for us to pay our recapture payment. So I'm not sure that that's really indicative. But I think in Proposition B, we have a relatively small margin of of passage of just a little over 4% or or 3,000 votes. And so that 52 to 47, I think we really have to pay attention to. That could easily swing the other direction, and we have at least 35,000 voters in the district who don't necessarily agree that that was the right thing to do. And so I think we need to be honest about that and transparent about the reality of where we sit right now. I'd like to look a little bit more closely at at the voter roll because I think this data tells us a good story. In the district, this is for the election on November 8, we have about 148,000 registered voters. Of those 148,000, 50, just a little over 56,000 of those voted, so about a 38% turnout. I'm not going to dive into the city data. We're just going to keep it relatively high level. When we look at the age of those voters, we can see that the age of our registered voters here on the top right is about 46 and a half years. Of those who actually voted, it's a little higher at 52.09, and that's an average. And you can see that that's coming from the largest number of voters who are turning turning out of the 65-plus range. I think we need to pay attention to the data. I'll point out that this is only the early voting data. We do have election day data as well, we just don't have it aggregated in here yet. We will get that, and we will be doing that analysis as well later. These next two slides are really important, in my opinion. This is the bond election data from 2021, so this was November 2021 when we failed the bond by 215 votes. On the left column, you can see these are our guardians, so our parents essentially, and that's with a turnout of about 19% of the total turnout of only 14% of our registered voters. On the right-hand column, you see our employees. We had about half of our employees registered to vote. Lots of reasons why some of those employees are not registered to vote, they may not live in the district, they may be registered in other districts, things like that. Out of those who were registered to vote, only 842 of our employees voted. But here's the thing to pay attention to. In the middle, at about 79 and a half percent are voters in the district who are not connected to the district either as a parent or guardian or as an employee. So they essentially don't have a direct connection to the district. So when you go and look at the November 8, 2022 data, you can see that our our, that number in the middle changed to just a little over 80% of those voters. It was pleasing to see that we turned out a lot more of our employees. Again, only about half of them are registered. We turned out in early voting alone, over 55% of our employees to vote. And so as we see election day data come in, I think we'll see that increase significantly as well. And the turnout, of course, much higher on the parent and guardian side as well, I think as a result of the the hard work that that S E R and Christine and her team did to make sure that that we turn people out. All right, so let's jump into our 10-year long-range plan. I'm going to start with the plan that the board committee created initially based on 2021 Passa data, and then we'll jump a little further ahead as we look at what happens with this plan with the new data. So remember, this is spring of 2022, and this is based on the 2021 Passa data. Just to give you a little layout of this chart, on the left in that first column is just the years, and we're going over the next 10 years from '22 to '32. That first column is when we open new schools. These would be new construction schools in what years in order to accommodate what you've just seen, well, not what you've just seen, but this is the data from 2021. So Elementary 29 is North Elementary School that opened this year, funded out a 2017 bond. Elementary 30, we have already approved the G M P for that last month. That is funded out of project savings and so is going to go under construction very shortly. And then projected for '25 and '26 to have two elementary schools open. We have High School 7 in '28, Middle School 10 in '29, and then a one more elementary in 31, 32. So if you remember the data that she just talked about, she had projected those high school and middle school to be earlier than that. The way that the board committee worked this out is through attendance zoning, so strategic attendance zoning to allow us to push out when we brought those high school and middle school campuses online. And we'll talk about that in a in a coming slide a little bit more. So in the next column, in that third column, you see what the zoning is. So of course, every time we open a new school, we're doing rezoning for that new campus and the surrounding schools. We have secondary school zoning for relief. We already talked about having to do that in order to get High School 7 and Middle School 10 pushed out. And then the other thing that you saw in the data is that we start to see elementary school and middle school campuses becoming available for renovation or modified utilization over the period. And so you start to see zoning that affects as those campuses become available. And that renovation modified utilization schedule then comes in the fourth column. So you see that in '25, '26, we have one central elementary school. By central, we mean in the Cedar Park area. And then in '26, one south elementary school down in the Steiner Ranch area. And then in '230, we get that southern middle school become available for utilization. And then this last column is just talking about the schools of And then this last column is just talking about the schools of choice. So we've talked about New Hope High School getting a new facility, about the Early College High School at ACC. These are both existing schools of choice in the district and the facilities plans for those with a possible other school of choice. And you've heard the presentations as we've gone through the process of what those might look like as we go on. Okay, so I'm going to pause for a second and just make sure that we're comfortable with this table. Okay, all right. So let's talk about those secondary schools and specifically the rezoning and what that looks like. So again, this is with our current attendance zones, what the projection is for those middle schools and high schools. And you see them going over capacity in those years. And you also see some of the underutilization at our middle schools in the south. And on that high school, so any of those blues. All right, so in twenty twenty one, the demographic report originally projected that we needed a high school seven in twenty five, twenty six, and high school eight sometime in the future. And we'd need middle school ten in twenty four, twenty five, and then or perhaps in twenty five, twenty six, just depending on how the growth came. With the old data and the the new plan, we pushed high school seven out to twenty eight, twenty nine, and indefinitely postponed high school eight. So we tried to kind of push it off, hopefully to never have to build it. And we moved middle school ten to twenty nine and thirty, and then that southern middle school became available in twenty thirty one. With the new data that we've just heard from PASA and an updated rezoning plan, we think that we can potentially push high school seven out one more year to twenty nine, thirty, continue to indefinitely postpone high school number eight, and only need middle school ten in twenty thirty. And importantly, that southern middle school becomes available two years earlier, so in the twenty eight, twenty nine school year. So essentially, what you'll see is this new data has exacerbated the problem that we already have. So we have too much growth in the north and decline in population in the south. With the new data, what that's showing is we got more growth in the north than we thought, and we got more decline in the south than we thought. And so it's kind of widened that gap and created some of these changes that become possible. Why is it important that we push out high school seven and middle school ten? Well, partly it's a bond planning. So if we plan a three year bond, then by pushing high school seven out to twenty nine, we don't have to start construction on that until the next bond period. And so it doesn't have to go into this bond period. And when I show you the numbers in terms of cost in a little bit, you'll understand why that becomes really, really important. There are double edged swords through all of this, right? So every decision you make has implications, positive and negative. So as we push high school seven out, that takes it out of our immediate radar and need. But it also increases the cost of that high school at some point if costs continue to rise the way that they are. But it pushes it out far enough that I'm not sure that we'll know what the economic environment will be at that time. And so I think that's a risk that we're willing to take. All right, any questions about high school or secondary school rezoning and and where we're pushing schools? Okay. All right, so I show you this slide just as an example of the work that Jimmy and Marty have done. And to say to you that it is possible through rezoning with the data that I've just given you and put in those schools where we said to alleviate the problem that we have at middle school and high school across the district. And so what we're trying to achieve with any of these charts that you see is we don't want red numbers because the red numbers are one hundred and twenty percent utilization or above, and and that's what we want to avoid. And the other thing that we're trying to avoid is having too many blue squares because that means they're below eighty percent utilization. And so it is possible, this is one possible way to do that, to make sure that we can meet the needs of our growing population, that we're utilizing our underutilized campuses through rezoning, and only opening the schools in twenty nine for the high school and thirty for middle school number ten. Okay? All right, any other questions quickly about middle schools or high schools?
Just a quick comment, not a question, but just to set minds at ease a little bit. That prior slide and the the zoning that Jimmy and Marty have done. These are not draconian zoning changes, right? They're practical, reasonable changes. They are changes and they do impact real families and real students. But they're not, they're not extreme, I would say.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's really important to note is that, yeah, they are indeed reasonable and possible.
And yeah, I do have questions. I'm holding them though as we move forward, so.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about elementary schools, which is a little more complex just simply because there's a lot more of them. And so the zoning gets a little more complicated as we go through this. So just to give you a lay of the land, this is our two hundred square miles. Down the south, of course, is Steiner Ranch and Four Points area. And then we have Cedar Park in the central part where you see area A, area B and area D. And then Leander in that northern part, area A and area C. We've start started to label this for elementary school purposes in these four quadrants just so that you can understand where schools are going to come. And and so we're going to call them Elementary A, Elementary B, Elementary C, Elementary D. So then you get an idea of of where they will go, not exact locations, but just so you understand where they are in terms of the geography in order to to create the relief that we need. All right, so this is the old data with the ten year plan that the board originally, the board committee originally put together. And you can see along with Jimmy and Laura Lynn and Marty, they managed with the opening of several new elementary schools, and you can see them down at the bottom, Elementary A, C and B. And those relate to those quadrants we just talked about. They have managed over time to get rid of the hundred and twenty percent capacity issues that we were having. This does not show, of course, all of the underutilized campuses, those on the next slide. But this is taking care of of the immediate growth issue. So now remember, this was for twenty one data and the original ten year long range plan. And these are the underutilized campuses. You can see the ones that are in the central part of the district, Fabian Mason, Nauman Reed and Westside. And then we have those two in the south, really three, because it's Steiner, Bush and River Ridge, with the river place going over capacity and stain over capacity significantly over time. All right, so then we took that old plan and put the new data in that PASA just gave to us. And here you can see that exacerbation of the problem that we have, which is we've got more growth in the north than we anticipated. And so the problem comes really with Laxbury North and Tarvin, as she pointed out. And it becomes a significant problem starting in the twenty six, twenty seven school year. And so existing long range plan doesn't necessarily work with the new data that we have. And the same is true for our underutilized campuses. So now instead of five, I've got eight in the central part of the district and three very solidly down in the southern part of the districts. And I've got eleven elementary schools below eighty percent of capacity. And so it creates a vaccine problem for us because we have capacity in schools. It's just they're not in the right place. And I've got, you know, not enough capacity in the north where where all the housing is happening. All right, so then this happened. They laugh at me because that's kind of what the inside of my brain feels like most of the time. But Jimmy and Marty went away and did really an incredible amount of work. They spent not this last weekend, but the weekend before, literally the whole weekend locked up in a room, trying to figure out how do we make this work? Like, what can we do to the long range plan to make those red numbers go away and to utilize our underutilized campuses to the maximum extent possible? How do we make this work? But still make it practical, not make it draconian, as Aaron pointed out. How do, how do we make all that work? And so I'll again say thank you to those two because they really, really have done some incredible work. We're not going to visit all that messy detail. Remember, I told you, we're just going to go over the top of it to make sure we understand what that detail tells us. But I assure you that the work is is solid and good. Right, so part of our problem at Laxbury North and Tarvin is that those three all have early childhood or pre K communities in their schools. So full day, four year old pre K and half day, three year old pre K. If we could somehow move the early childhood out of those three campuses, it would alleviate the overcrowding. We currently have seventeen early childhood communities in the district. And the reason we went to that was a philosophical one. So we wanted to make sure that we started getting early childhood teachers together so that they could interact with each other. They could PLC together, they could learn from each other and support each other. And that's why we had that initial conversation. So we had pre K at a lot of different schools before that. We made this change. There was some angst over the change from teachers. Teachers have come to appreciate it. So when you talk to our early childhood teachers now, they are very grateful to be in, for the most part, in those early childhood communities. So the question we asked ourselves is, does it make sense to create early childhood centers? So what an early childhood center would be is a purely pre K campus. So pre Ks three and four together in either a new facility or a renovated existing facility. The first question we asked then is philosophically, does this make sense? And as you start asking questions later, we did bring the experts, so Erin and her team are back here. They did bring the children with, showed them the children. Okay, they did bring the average height of a three year old with them so that we can make sure that we understand what we're talking about. So we asked them, so explain to us, you like the early childhood communities. Does it make sense to do early childhood centers philosophically? Is that what's best for kids? To cut a long story short, I'll tell you that their answer was basically yes. Philosophically, it is what's best for those children. We addressed the issues of inclusion. So does, if we take them away from their older peers on pre K five campuses, how does that affect them? Essentially, the answer to that is if you go to one of those pre K fives with pre K students on it, they're pretty much isolated in a wing somewhere. They don't really interact with any of the other children anyway. In real life, what happens to three and four year olds that are not in schools? They're either in a daycare center or in a in a pre K somewhere. And they're isolated from from their older siblings and things like that already. People already make that move. They take their early childhood kids somewhere. They take the elementary kids somewhere else. So that seemed to make sense. So this becomes then a possibility for us, and it philosophically works. But it also helps us with this gnarly problem that we have of too many students in these three campuses specifically. So then what would it do to the long range plan if we took that into consideration? So remember, we've talked about secondary rezoning, and that's showing up here. We've talked about early childhood centers and how that alleviates. And we've talked about the way that the new data exacerbates the growth in the north and increases the amount of capacity that we have in the center and the south. And so I'm going to now pull up both of these together. So this on the left is the original plan, and this on the right is the new plan with the new data. And I'm just going to quickly walk you through the changes. So bear with me and watch what happens and see if it makes sense. So that elementary school thirty two that we called thirty two is going to be called B in the future, and it moves from twenty six to twenty seven. The south elementary school that was available in twenty six now becomes available in twenty five. So because we're getting more capacity, it can be available earlier. We've pushed high school seven to twenty nine. We've pushed middle school ten to thirty. And that southern middle school that was available for utilization in thirty comes two years earlier and is now available in twenty eight. So all of those changes you can see on this side are kind of highlighted in those gold blocks. So then instead of having one central elementary school available for repurposing in twenty five, we now have two and possibly three elementary schools available for repurposing. We also have these early childhood centers opening either in new facilities or potentially in renovated facilities because we have campuses coming open. And then we have another early childhood center coming somewhere down in the twenty thirty range, near the end of the planning period. And then instead of one elementary school at the very end, tail end of the planning period, we now have two needed because of the way that that growth is exacerbated in the north. Okay, makes sense? Got it. Okay, so let's talk about costs a little bit. And this is the one that makes me sweat a little bit. So Elementary thirty is the one that we're building out of bond savings right now. It's going on an open field across the highway from Glen High School. And so that northwest part of the district, what we call A, so this is going to be called Elementary A after this. The southern boundary of that is the extension of San Gabriel Parkway. And and there are some requirements for us to build roads around that because of the development that we're in. So part of that purchase, if you remember, was the fact that we'd build those roads. Those roads are going to cost about twelve million. An elementary school that's going to open in twenty twenty five is now going to cost us about eighty million dollars. To give you context, we built North Elementary for forty two and a half million, and that opened in twenty twenty two. In twenty six, we're having to project ninety million for that next elementary school. Capital renewal, what is that? That is renovation of existing facilities. So we can't ignore the fact that we have to take care of our existing facilities. This is the HVAC carpet paint renovation projects that you've seen before in the district that are continuing. This is, help me, sixteen campuses in the first round for a cost of five hundred million. If we build new facilities for New Hope High School or Early College High School, they're about fifty million apiece. A new early childhood center would cost somewhere in the sixty eight million range. And if we renovated an existing campus, about half of that. If we build high school seven in twenty twenty nine, the projection is somewhere in the in the ballpark of four hundred and twenty six million. So in two thousand thirteen, we built Glen for a hundred and twenty million. And middle school in twenty thirty is about a hundred and sixty five million. We built Danielson for about sixty million in two thousand eighteen. All right, so here are the challenges that I see ahead. And I'm going to be a little vulnerable here because I'm not sure that I understand everything. I'm not sure that I know how to step forward. I feel a little bit like I've been on a lily pad. And you know, if you try to stand on a lily pad, it's not exactly stable. We managed to get through the election and now stepped to the next lily pad. I got one foot still here. I'm just barely moving over, but this lily pad is even worse than that one. And there's a lot of deep water down here, and there's all kinds of critters in there. And I'm just a little nervous about how to step forward. So I come to you saying all that to say this. We've always put citizen facility advisory committees together to get community input on how do we step forward? What are the needs of the district? And then how do we put that into practice in terms of shaping a bond package that they then bring a recommendation to the board? The board approves that recommendation, puts it on the ballot, and we go to the ballot. If you look at the costs, we really are not giving a C F A C any kind of options. I mean, there's just not a whole lot for them to do. So they're together. We've organized them. They're working. They've been working without the data because we said we're only getting passer data now. They're expecting after this to go out and start doing this work of putting the needs of the district together. I just am not sure that there's, I don't know what to tell them to do. The next thing that's in my mind is that when we put a bond proposal together, essentially what we're doing is saying we're putting this very specific thing together, and then we're asking the community to tell us, yes, we want to do that, or no, we don't want to do that. What I don't think we've done is determined what that bond package has to be. And so I don't think we've gone out and really understood from the community, what do you want us to do? How do you want us to step forward? And I I really believe that we have to have a good handle on that if we're going to step forward successfully. So I've watched districts around us, put bond practice. So I've watched districts around us, put bond packages on the ballot, and their communities say no. And these are places that really need those packages to pass because they've got high schools at capacity of twenty-five-hundred with twenty-five-hundred kids in them, and it's going to take another three years to build a high school. And and the community is saying, no, you cannot have the money to build that high school. And I don't want to be in that position. And so I want us to really understand before we go to a bond package what it is that we need to put on that bond package so that with a fair amount of certainty, I know that it's going to pass, or that we know collectively that it's going to pass. And so I don't I don't think that what we've done before necessarily allows the kind of community input that we need to have. I think that's exacerbated by the potential recession that I think we're headed into. You've heard some of that. There's such a high degree of uncertainty for me, both economically, I think socially, still post-pandemic, that we're and then politically, and we've seen that. So that's the reason that I talked about our election results and the statewide election results in the beginning. And I think honestly, there's another one that I didn't put up there, but I think emotionally, I think there's a lot of uncertainty for folks in our community. I want to acknowledge that we failed the bond election in November of twenty-twenty-one by a small margin, but we were on the wrong side of that. Honestly, in the cost environment we're in, I'm somewhat relieved that that happened because I have friends who are in the position of having approved them and are now having to go back to their communities and ask for more money because they can't afford to build what they promised to build. And I think we could easily have been in that position if if it had passed. And then we've talked about the fact that many districts are failing or passing bond issues by very narrow margins. And and I'm not sure that we're willing to take that risk. I do believe that a second failed bond in Leander ISD is a very dangerous thing for us. And it's potentially something that we might not easily recover from. And so I think we have to be very certain when we go out that we know what we're asking for and why. So here's my recommendation. I'm recommending that we do proceed with the secondary zoning in order to delay High School seven to twenty-twenty-nine and Middle School ten to twenty-thirty. That secondary rezoning needs to begin immediately and will flow through the next semester and then be put into place for the August of twenty-twenty-four year, so the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So folks will have almost a full year's worth of notice of where your kids are going and what that's going to look like. And that will then get us to where I think we can only have to open High School seven in twenty-nine and Middle School ten in thirty. That zoning has not been done. We've run some testing to see, is it possible? We do think it is possible, but there's a process that we've been through multiple times in this district to set a charter, and Jimmy's going to come up in a minute and talk about what that looks like. And then to go through an extensive community process to make sure that we understand what the community wants in terms of secondary rezoning.
To clarify, you're talking about keeping that same charter. Those will be the discussions where community still has input on this.
Absolutely. So we'll bring a charter to the board that says this is how we plan to execute the zoning process. The board approves that charter. Then we then go out to the community and start putting scenarios in front of the community, eliciting feedback, making changes. We'll periodically bring those changes back to the board to keep you updated. But essentially, we'll churn through all of that until we're fairly certain that we're landed in a good spot, and then we'll bring that back to the board for approval and and implementation in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. If I said everything correctly so far? Okay, for the most part. Okay, he'll correct me in a second. All right, I do recommend that we continue with the construction of Elementary School thirty out of bond savings. I think we have the site, we have a design, we're already under GMP number one. And so I would strongly recommend that we continue that. That will be for opening that campus in twenty-twenty-four of August. And then my last recommendation is that we repurpose CFAC. So I originally thought we needed to pause CFAC. And then Federico made a really great comment this morning to me that said, I don't think you need to stop their work because they're such a powerful organized unit already. Let's repurpose them and help get them to help us to engage in this extensive community listening project to help develop these options for long-range facilities, including potential future bond packages. I don't think we can do that in the timeline we have and get something on the May ballot. We might be able to, and I'm open to that, but I don't see that path clearly forward because I think if we do that, we rush, and I think if we rush, we don't really hear what the community has to tell us. And I'm not sure that we'll we'll get the result that we need. So that changes a little bit what we originally thought when we set CFAC off and we started in this process. But I think that's that's where I'm landing. So.
Board members?
I just want to thank you for bringing this. This is kind of interesting because of coming back from Leadership Tasby and hearing from the board members who passed the bond three years ago, two years ago, talking about, well, now we're trying to sell these bonds, and we can't afford because the cost is literally double what we had planned. And we people have voted on this, and we told them these are the things we were going to do. And now we are having to go back with our bond committees and figure out what which one of those things are we going to do because you simply can't because the price of everything has just gone up. Another thing we talked a lot about is bonds failing right now. And we saw it in school districts that have never failed a bond, school districts that are in this high growth, that are at capacity, and and really spend a lot of time talking about, okay, well, let's look at the ones that did pass. What was different? What was happening? And it was extensive community involvement in everything that was on there so that when it came time to go to bond, that you really had different people. I mean, you had people in every corridor of that district being champions, you know, for the various things that were on there. And and so I think, given this looming recession and being able to spend enough time really digging deep with our community, hosting those listening sessions at all the schools and and just, we need, we need to hear what the community really wants there, and are they willing to be champions of those items? Because if if they're not, then we're going to have to figure something else out. So I I think that this is spot on. So thank you, Dr. Gary, for bringing this to us.
One thing I wanted to bring up was I appreciate the fact that we have the twenty-twenty-one data and the twenty-twenty-two data. I know that there was some discussion about how, you know, well, this was the plan, and so we're going to go for it. But I'm really glad that we have the updated information from them because there were a lot of changes. And without having the full picture, had we put a plan out there and said, oh, wait, never mind, we we need to backtrack. And so I appreciate the professionalism that we're showing the community by taking a pause and saying, okay, let's get the 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 most current information so that when we do present a plan, it it truly reflects what is coming. So and I I agree with Gloria. I think, you know, making sure that we take the time to talk to Austin ISD. How did they do it? What did they do? What kind of messaging did they do? What kind of groups did they get together? How did they reach out to the community who isn't necessarily part of our district, meaning those parents or those voters who don't have a kid in the, they don't have a, they don't have a kid in the game, right? So I think all of that is really important, but I appreciate the pause, and thank you so much to Jimmy. I know that this is a lot, and I love the scribble. That was fantastic. So thank you.
So a couple of things came to mind. First of all, when it comes to the assumptions, looking at the district where some parts of the parts in the in the north have the high, the faster growth and then in the central and south, not so much. It looks like the data that we're using is the moderate growth path. Is it possible to mix and match and say, look, in the 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 northern parts will use maybe the moderate growth, and then the central and southern parts look into using like the lower growth numbers expectation?
I'm gonna call Stacy back up because she's going to help me with that one. I don't think that makes sense, but maybe Stacy can weigh in. I think that's already taken into account, essentially is what I believe.
So the moderate growth scenario is what we consider right now to be the most likely course of the future. As you know, everything changes, and so we try to bracket in reality with the low and the high. However, I I don't think that we can justify saying moderate growth in one part of the district and low growth in the other part of the district because it's more convenient. I think if we see some 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 reason, like another charter school or three come in, then then that would justify using low-growth scenarios in that particular part of the district. But in the lack, in the absence of specific drivers, I would say the moderate growth scenario is our our best guess at this point. I have also, we have other clients who have used the moderate growth scenario in their planning, and and they recovered from COVID loss faster than that are actually according to the moderate growth scenario, but but now they are are paying a price with their short-term planning because they wanted to be conservative and go with the low-growth scenario.
Thank you. And then looking at the, this will be free, I guess, looking at the cost of the buildings and also looking at the projections for certain number of buildings, existing facilities going blue, so below eighty percent. Is there a way to, I guess, reimagine or is, I mean, is the only option really just to build how we've always built? Is there, are there other districts that are trying to look at it differently?
So I need you to help me just talk, keep talking because I'm, because there's several different ways of thinking about that. Are you talking about buildings specifically in terms of capacity, in terms of of designer buildings? Are you talking more about, could we rezone differently? What what is in your head?
It's really about the buildings themselves because when you were talking about that high school being like almost over four hundred million for that building, and I'm like, well, how much longer before it goes blue? And I mean, just, I'm just thinking whether there is a different way. It's just could be something for people to think about later, whether it's just a different way of looking at.
I think what you're talking about somewhat is the standard of buildings, right? So in this district, we build to a certain standard, and that's the way that we've priced these particular buildings, right? To stay with the kind of facilities that we have in the rest of the district already. Do you have to build a four hundred million dollar high school to accommodate twenty-four hundred students? You don't, in fact, have to do that. But that's part of the conversation that I think we really need to have is what is the expectation of our community going forward? And how do we want to do that? Because we have that standard of building existing in our district, what do we want to do with the new one? So it's a lot about materials, about construction style, about architectural design. There's, there's a lot of different things that can change. There's a lot of variables in those. But we have to have really robust conversations about how do we want to do that? And what is the expectation of our community going forward? So that when we land on, we're putting that on the ballot for a yes or a no, we have a fairly firm understanding of how that's going to come out. Does that help?
Yes, thanks.
I'd like to thank you too for presenting what I agree with is is vulnerability, uncertainty out there. And you had talked about that, that when you came to the district, you'd tell us the good stuff and the not-so-good stuff. And so I think the uncertainty is important to know. So thank you for being willing to share that with the board. I also like the the recommendations that you've brought before us. It's a lot of work. I'm curious, and we might not have all the answers now, what does repurpose CFAC look like? I love the idea of taking our community leaders who have committed so much time already and continue to use them, leverage that information, the brain trust that they pulled together to help kind of go out into the community and continue to pull that information together. I'm also curious, how does that work with our specifically Safety and Security Committee? Because we also know there's charges and funding already coming available, and there's, that's a little bit of a different area. And we might not have all those answers now, but that's one of the things I've been curious about.
Yeah, and so I think the simple answer to your first question is, I don't know exactly what it looks like going forward. What I know is that as we do this extensive community listening project, that's a very difficult thing to do. I think somebody pointed out, maybe Gloria, that it's really hard to get information out of the community to know exactly what it is they want and and how they're going to go forward. If we look at our registered voter roll, a small portion of our population are actually registered voters, and they're not all of those votes. So the people who are making the actual decision at the end of the day is not the whole community. Yet we're charged to make sure that we understand what the whole community wants. It is difficult work. I don't know exactly what that looks like. I'm not sure that I know exactly what a repurposed CFAC looks like. I think that's something that we have to develop together through conversation, through kind of arguing backwards and forwards and trying to figure out what that looks like. I do think it's messy, difficult work. But having seen the work that we did to prepare for this last election, I think we're prepared to do that kind of messy, difficult work. All right, help me with what I haven't answered.
The security, safety and security portion?
Yeah, I think safety and security, we do have that subcommittee working. That is something that that came up in conversation this morning. I think we have to talk about that very seriously. We don't know yet what the legislature is going to do. There are strong indications, I think, that they're going to do something, either with the allotment, the safety allotment, or with grants or lump sums or something. They've already kind of indicated that with approval of that four hundred million that's starting to go out to school districts already out of the existing budget. So I think we'll see some movement on that, on the MNO side. And then, you know, what what we want to do as a community, I think, has to come to the table. I think there's the potential for us to say, there are other scenarios here where we can take a small package to the community if that becomes something that the community starts to demand. So if they say, this is what we want you to bring in terms of safety and security alone, I think we could take something to the community in a relatively short order if we have a fairly clear mandate and we understand that that's what's wanted. I don't think that's off the table at all. But I I need to see that swell up, I think, from our community to drive that that momentum forward.
So I have a, I guess, a comment and a couple of separate questions. The first comment just relates to, in particular, the zoning and the development of a ten-year plan. Just a a small caution. The latest data is always the best data and always improves the version of the plan from the one we had before. But we shouldn't let that cause us to be reluctant to move forward or make choices or decisions. We still need to do that. We can't wait indefinitely for the next round of better data. And on top of that, we all need to be very transparent about the fact that a ten-year plan for zoning is going to require adjustment. The probability that we get the plan perfect ten years ahead is very, very low. And so it's a, it's a ten-year outlook, it's a ten-year plan, but I think we need to set expectations, and we need to have expectations ourselves that we're going to have to iterate and adjust and revise as we go. Hopefully, they're minimal. Hopefully, they're relatively insignificant, and we can do them in time so that they're not disruptive for people. But that's just going to be part of the experience. So piggybacking on Trish's comment around repurposing the CFAC, I do think it is helpful to provide some clear structure around what that is fairly quickly. And one of the key components of that is, and I don't know if I'd call it repurposing exactly, but it is modifying the CFAC plan or program, right? And one of the key. And one of the key things is, if not may, then we do probably need to set a target for a likely bond issue. Construction program itself is gonna drive some of that. And so I think we need to be very clear about what those windows are or aren't, and what happens if we slide past a particular date. Well, it's good to be open and seek this groundswell of support before we go forward. I think we also have to be realistic that, at some point, we have to make decisions and use what we've got to make the best effort we can, given the facts on the ground. So, that turned into a comment more than a question. So, the last item for me is a question around elementary zoning. The Long Range Planning Committee or Subcommittee in our work looked at elementary zoning as well, and when we consider opening new elementaries and repurposing elementary schools, that's gonna require zoning conversations as well. Those may not be immediate, but I do think we need to have, we need to build into our schedule when those occur, so that we can very clearly communicate with our community, and we can very clearly set expectations about when those conversations are going to occur.
Yeah, I think that's, I think I heard three things. So, zoning has to occur at the secondary level, and I think that's one of the recommendations I'm making, is that we step into that zoning immediately to make that possible, to not overcrowd our schools in the immediate future. And it creates that long-range plan of getting high school seven and middle school 10 where they need to be. The second thing is the elementary zoning, I'm kind of going to the end, but we have kind of laid that out here. So, what you see is the opening of Elementary A in 2024, and then next to that, you see elementary school zoning for Elementary A. That is the implementation of that zoning, but that zoning actually happens in the year before that, right? I think, is that what you're?
Well, as I looked at this, this seems to be specific to the elementary schools that are opening. In that third column, we also have elementary schools that are potentially open for different uses. And if we're closing elementaries to students or to traditional zoning patterns, we need to have had conversations and defined what those changes are gonna look like well in advance.
Correct. So, in that second column on the right-hand side, in 2025, '26, under the green, you'll see Central and South Elementary School zoning for renovation modified utilization, potential school of choice. So, that's the implementation of that modified zoning, but that modified zoning is gonna happen in the two years prior to that, right? So, yes, to be clear, that modified zoning is gonna go into effect in '25.
Okay. So, it's there in terms of when it goes into effect. I just think we need to recognize that that probably needs to start in terms of conversations fairly quickly. We've got secondary sort of immediately, but the elementary seems to me is a fast follower.
Yeah, so the secondary's gonna go in in '24, and that has to start right now, so we're in '22. And so, for the elementary that's gonna happen in '25, that has to start at this time next year, those conversations. So, absolutely, yeah. So, it's not clearly laid out on here, and I recognize that.
But for scope, when you look at, and use the word modification, or modification, or utilization of a campus, are you saying that that campus may be completely closed to traditional students? Or it, there may be some type of hybrid that's going to occur? Do we know what exactly that means right now?
So, we do not know exactly what that means right now, because it really depends on what we're gonna use it for. So, it might be a school of choice, it might be an early childhood center, it might end up having an early childhood community in some of it, because essentially, one of the things you want to do with early childhood kids is keep them on one level if possible. You don't want them going up and downstairs. So, there may be an early childhood center on the ground floor, there may be some other utilization on the second floor. So, I think that's the work we have to do together as a community, is decide what happens to those campuses as their capacity opens up. We're also not, if you'll notice, we haven't named a single school on here, because we have 11 elementary campuses that are potentials for reutilization, but which of those we choose is gonna depend very much on a lot of different factors. And so those are the conversations that I think we have to have very candidly as a community together.
I just want to say, as someone who lives in the north side, a kid's at Tarvin, Danielson, one to be at Glenn, I do understand what the north is facing as far as population growth. I see it in the pickup line, I see my child has 27 kids in her class, but that's just where we live. I am, I know the long-range plan, we worked really hard at figuring out how can we best utilize our facilities, because that's, we had that December workshop, and that is what the board and the community asked for, and I think we put together a good plan. However, I am pretty excited to see, well, not excited, I guess, but a little concerned. I like the new data, because I do feel like this is going to help us really find a way to engage our community. I feel like we have a chance to really get our communities buy-in to a, granted, it is called a long-range plan, but Aaron is right, it will change over time. However, I, me personally, I think this is a chance for us to really, again, bring in community members, get their feedback. I don't, I really could see us, like, I know we've done rezoning exercises a certain way, but I feel like there's a chance for us here to really get that input from our teachers, our parents, our students, because of, I mean, this is going to affect a pretty wide range of individuals. I did have some questions as far as early childhood centers. Can you, or Erin, possibly explain what these centers look like? Is it just gonna be pre-K, that's it? Are we gonna have early special education services? Are we gonna have parents as teachers there, Head Start? What does those centers look like, so our community can get an understanding of what they will offer? Oh, and will we offer tuition-based pre-K?
So, I don't know that we have answers to all of your questions, but happy to have Erin come up and.
You're gonna show us that graph with all the circle?
That's what I'm gonna do to them. And then, while we're at it, Transportation, I'm coming for you next.
So, yes, to your questions. And I'm done, thank you. So, one of the great pros about having early childhood centers is that there's so much more that we could do than how we're doing early childhood right now, which is our 117 communities, right? So, but always, whether we're talking about communities or an early childhood center, when we say early childhood, that means children who qualify for pre-K and/or early childhood special ed. They're one group, they're one great big group, and there's so many more things we could do if we're on an early childhood center. Would we like to have some parent educators from the Parents as Teachers Program there? Absolutely. Could we look at Acts of Love being there? Could we look at doing more with Head Start, our community partners? Absolutely.
So, my next question, Transportation, and it ties into early childhood. I know there were some difficulties as far as when we put the hubs in and having Transportation make extra routes, from my understanding. So, how will Transportation fit into this early childhood hub? Do you see, sorry, Myron, be beneficial to our bus drivers, or is it going to make it more routes?
Yes.
Yes.
Myron, just remember, I have the power to turn your microphone off.
Yes. Yes, that's the short of it. I mean, it's something that we've been discussing anyway, there's been a lot of discussions around this, and Ms. Kathy, yes, who was, during the June, my left was doing a lot of work with Marty and Jimmy on this. There will be some challenges, but we just like the plan going forward, that there is a plan, because I liken it to the earliest college high school, that once we settle on what we're gonna do, we can plan accordingly.
I did have one other early childhood-related comment or concern. I think changing the model ultimately is a principal question for the families that it affects, in terms of the logistics and the transportation requirements, moving from 17 centers to whatever that number is of two or three or whatever, that changes the experience for those families somewhat significantly. And so, all that to say, while I think this may solve our elementary school number issue, we may need a backup plan. This may not be something that our community's ready to embrace in terms of the indirect costs that they incur to do this.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, and I think that's part of the conversation that we have to have, is, does that plan work? Instead of saying, here's the plan, and we put it on a bond proposition, and do you say yes or no? Well, if they don't like it, they're gonna say no, and then, and then we're kind of up the creek without a paddle. So, I think that is the conversation that we have, is, does this work? And if so, what, creating equities? We don't want to create situations where some are getting, you know, one experience and others are not. And so, I think those are the very challenging conversations that we have to have.
Well, and then I'm gonna piggyback off that conversation. I assumed it was given, but I don't want to assume anymore. Same thing for the traditional schools, right? If you're talking about what is a repurpose or change in utilization, we need to have community input. They might want something different.
Absolutely.
And as we go forward, when you say repurposed CFAC, that is, CFAC, that's definitely having some community input. Do we also look at, and I guess this will move us into our next agenda item, so we don't have to go there just yet, but with zoning, are we looking at how we're getting, like, deep community input? Maybe a better, more heightened, more intense look? Because there have been some occasions where your community may say, oh, I thought, I was just shown this, and I didn't feel like I really was able to give input. Are we gonna be able to make sure that's robust?
Yeah, I'm questioning that you want a tenant zone planning to be more intense?
I don't know, we'll see when we have that discussion next. But there is the question of how we can have community input.
I do hear you, I'm poking at you a little bit, but I do hear you, in terms of making sure that they have the opportunity to really understand what it is that we're proposing and have the ability to provide that input and that feedback. And I think that's what we're looking for. It's difficult to do, I'm warning you right now, that it's not always easy or successful. So, we'll do the very best that we can to put those out there, and then to really pay attention and listen as people are telling us things, to make sure that what we're bringing back is as close to what the community is asking for. We cannot also just go to the community and say, what do you want? Because if we do that, we're gonna get 163 different answers, and that's not gonna be helpful. So, we are gonna have to shape programs and say, here is one option, what do you think about this? How do we do that? Eventually, we've got to come to make a decision of what we're gonna put on potential bond issues, because we're gonna come to that at some point in time. And what I want is, at that point in time, when somebody says, I'm not gonna support the bond, everybody else is going, why on earth not? You know, we've talked about this, it makes a lot of sense. That's the kind of feedback that we're looking for.
Anything else before we move to zoning? All right.
Okay, so you guys are dismissed, thank you. And we're gonna bring Jimmy up next. Do you need to take a break, perhaps?
Oh, board members, y'all want to take a break? Yeah, I'm sitting heading on.
Okay, so when you come back?
8:23.
At 8:23, then Jimmy and his team are gonna talk to you a little bit about zoning.
Awesome.
All right, board members, it is eight twenty-three. We are back in open session. We'll go ahead and call up our next discussion, agenda item. Discussion of attendance zoning for secondary school relief process and the charter.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we're here to actually start talking about the attendance zoning for secondary school relief. And so, of course, what we do want to show first is, under policy FC local, it does talk about where the recommendation from student tenant to the school board, you know, for changes in tenant zones. And I think the last part, every attempt shall be made to authorize and publicize such changes so that parents and students have time to prepare, is very important. And so that's one thing, reason we're needing to start this, because for it to become effective in the August of 2024, we want to allow the students and families at least a year of time to be able to prepare and know where they're going. So schedule changes, et cetera. And so that's, we want to make sure. As Dr. Gearing did mention, you know, with the long range planning committee, we had a lot of discussions about tenant zoning and some of the parameters. And the things that we noted in the committee was, we will utilize tenant zoning, of course, with any new school opening. Then also to provide relief to current enrollment numbers, to modify the utilization of a current school or facility, and then also defer time in future construction. And so, of course, we want to try to, you know, the tenant zoning process needs to try to meet the parameters of long range plan, because this plan is contingent upon the zoning process to move forward, to make a lot of these, you know, the actual plan to come to fruition. The long range plan parameters that the committee developed was, you know, we want to strengthen the student experience, you know. One thing we heard a lot about stability of the students not being moved all the time. And so we're trying to make it where we minimize any moves that we do have from zoning process. Of course, we want to honor the neighborhood school concept for the secondary schools where we're still able to meet the intent of the long range plan. You know, as you work through the process, it, we always want to try to meet those requirements. But there are times with all the different zoning parameters, you've got to look at, you know, the, how it's going to impact our plan. So, of course, prioritize fiscal responsibility. We want to maximize the usage of our facilities. We heard that after the November twenty-one bond. We need to maximize our facilities. And so we want to make sure to do that. And we can do that through strategic rezoning or modified utilization to use those facilities. And of course, we want to, of course, we want to defer the time in a future construction of our schools to manage our bond program and sales. Of course, you saw, you saw this slide now. I think this is the third time you've seen it tonight. But this really shows the current zones, tenant zones that we have with the new data from PASA tonight. And you can see what they projected was need a school with the green bars in twenty-five for the middle school and, or twenty-four, twenty-five. And then in high school, it looks like twenty-five or twenty-six. Depends how large you would actually push the high school, you know, that was in red. And so this is, if you do nothing. And so what we're trying to do is, you know, defer and give relief to the campuses that are going to be overcrowded and push off high school seven and eliminate high school eight if possible. The process that we're recommending tonight is, of course, to, you know, we'll present this tonight and then hopefully get the board to approve the, our process and also the charter on December eighth. Then, once that's done, we will actually start publicizing the scenarios in January. And of course, we'll go through public feedback. You know, with this zoning process, it's not our typical where we have a high school opening and it's sort of focused in a certain area of the district. We're going to be looking at zoning basically two-thirds of our district. And so we have a lot of work to go out and make sure to communicate with the community that you could be impacted. It's not so much as around a new high school. You've really got, we've got to reach out and work hard to make contact with all the various communities that will be impacted. And so, of course, we will do this a number of times. And then, once we've gone through that and we seem to have a lot of the comments addressed, then we're going to at least have two, if not more, public forums going out to the public and actually getting feedback. And so that's our plan to get as much feedback as we can. I know SCR is going to be working very closely to get the communications out and helping in that aspect. And then, of course, once we get to the point, we'll act, what we're recommending is to actually pull the long range planning committee back into the process, since this builds on their plan and they understand what the intent was, to pull them in and actually go through the scenario and feedback. And then if it's acceptable, then we'd bring it forward to the board. But if not, then we'd go back out and actually get more feedback and adjust it as needed. And then, of course, if you come to the board and once that's approved, like it's, it'd be implemented August of 2024 is what we're looking at.
Is it possible that the community input could be such that they don't build on the plan of the long range planning committee? And the long range planning committee needs to do or look at something else? How are we soliciting feedback? What, to what extent are we needing robust feedback from our community?
I think a lot of it will look at tweaking the scenarios to an acceptable level. You know, with high school seven, if we do nothing, it's needed in twenty-five, twenty-six, which today, if we started, that's, you probably wouldn't meet that timeline. And so it's real challenging to sit there and just say, okay, we're going to build the school. One, it won't fit in the, you know, you're looking at $400 million in this bond package just for that school. And so, you know, we'll be definitely getting input, but it's really tweaking the scenarios, not making wholesale changes, because it's a challenge with the long range plan. If we don't sort of follow the intent, you're looking at high school eight coming back.
If I can jump in there, I think my experience has pointed to the fact that this is very complex work, right? So I, I like to mess around with these things. I'm a kind of a math brain. But the tools that these two have, I, I want to start moving things around and doing things. And then I go and look at what Marty's done and I go like, forget it. Just get out the way, because she can do things with the technology and the tools that she has that we cannot physically do. And I don't think the community has the capability, honestly, to produce the kinds of scenarios that make sense as starting points. Now, they're going to have a lot of input into how does this affect me as a human being and my family? And I think that's the, the input that's really important. But we have to start somewhere. So, so I think, I think we've got to put out those scenarios and then start doing the modification and iterating.
And I, I do agree. I, I think that's, we got to start from somewhere. It needs to start the discussion. It's the iteration process. And really, what type of input are we seeking? Especially when we're thinking about, not so much pushing out that high school, but some of that utilization or repurposing some of our middle schools? How can input really happen in, in this process? Or is that not going to happen in this process and that'll be a different part?
For the repurposing or modification, that's really not part of this process. I think that's more the community feedback that we'll be going out to get. And so the next item was actually the charter that's being proposed. And of course, it's a little different than what we've done in the past. It does, of course, state that it'd be effective for the 2024, 25 school year. And then, of course, the theme in the description, you know, under the charter is, you know, just what I read to you. And so we're really trying to, you know, what we have typically seen in feedback from the community is the stability and then honoring the neighborhood schools where we can. And so, and then the fiscal responsibility is really a true response to what we heard after the last bond election. And so we'll be looking for, you know, the timeline. What we're proposing, of course, as I mentioned, is to get approval on December eighth. And then in the middle of January, once everybody's back in school and back in the flow, we'll start releasing the first scenario in, for the next six weeks. Go, you know, receive it and get a couple of weeks of feedback and then put out another scenario and try to, you know, hone in on what the main issues are and try to address those. And then after spring break, over the next two to three weeks, we'll look at having some community forums and going out to the public and getting, you know, in-person feedback and input. And then, of course, latter part of, mid part of April, get the long range planning committee to review it. And then if that's acceptable, then bring it to the board in May with approval in June. So the community knows what would be in place for the August of 2024.
Yeah, and that's important to point out, is that the approval would come in June, not for that August of that year, but for the following August. So they have a full school year to prepare for the impact that these changes will make.
Exactly.
There's a few moving parts in here that I think I understand how this might play out. I am concerned that there may be an aha moment in here where I may have said something different. So my question is, on March tenth, before we move out to the community forum, can we get a board update on kind of how we've gone thus far in the conversations to make sure there's nothing we need to tweak in the charter before we proceed?
Yeah. I'm not sure what the board meeting date is, first March, but we can put something on just to update you where we are.
And just, again, just to make sure things are proceeding and there's not something that's become apparent that we need to add or do to our process.
I would like to add, I'd like to see the long range planning committee get more updates than just the April seventeenth. So I hope perhaps we're getting monthly, if not, as, you know, when changes occur, that.
Yeah, I think if, if we're going to bring it back to the board in, in March, then we'll bring it to the long range planning committee prior to the board every time. I think that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And after we get an iteration or two, then we can have y'all get together. That way you'll know, you have better data to hear, better reports.
I just had a comment on the charter based on previous feedback. So you did mention honoring the neighborhood school concept. There are, there could be some homes that are still outside of that neighborhood concept, but they're still relatively close. And there's that tension between a longer transportation commute to a different school versus something that's still relatively close. So even though it's not clearly neighborhood, it's more of the student experience.
Yes. And we, as we move through this process, we do pull transportation in to look for those things we're triggering that's going to cause, you know, kids that are close. You know, we can see, but sometimes it might be the reason why. And so they'll understand their walk path and, you know, how it's associated with the school. And so we'll pull them in and they give us feedback. I know that what we put together for tonight, they were a major part of inputting into certain neighborhood codes that we actually use their recommendations instead of what we've done. I mean, it takes a team to get all this together and we'll make sure to look at that, though.
I had one more question. We are talking about host minimum of two community forms. Do we have any idea what those forms may look like? I mean, is it, what I'm envisioning is when we did the community conversations right before we went into COVID. I remember we hosted, you know, at each feeder high school and the attendance was the biggest I've seen. I mean, what are we envisioning? Are we wanting, you know, like what are you thinking about this?
SCR, we're working with SCR to put those together. But I could see, of course, I don't know that we'd jump to the Van De Grift pattern, because we're not touching any of it. But the rest of them, possibly hitting those, we're going to talk about the best way and see once all the, exactly, we'll touch what schools. And so we'll pull that together. But we definitely want to get input. Like I said, it's going to touch a lot of areas. And so we don't want to just hit the edges. We want to make sure to hit the communities that are impacted, give them an opportunity.
Yeah, and I think what we've found as we've gone through these other processes is that, you know, it becomes apparent fairly quickly if we need to put on a virtual or a Facebook Live or something like that to fill a gap that we've missed or an additional in-person. I think we've pivoted fairly well, like even coming up to this election, we, we added, you know, some in-person community forums and then some virtual ones as well. And so I think it, you know, we're going to make sure that we have that outreach and how we do that, I think we'll be relatively flexible as we go. Yeah.
Can you help me remember, or what you're planning this time for that, before that March tenth? You're going to bring something back to the board where you've collected community input. What would be the community input collecting method? And who would it have been that you've collected from?
Who, say it again, I'm sorry.
Who would you have collected from? And what process would that have been collected?
SCR will be driving that process as far as the outreach to the community to get solicit input and then the tools they'll use. I'm not sure.
I mean, I think it'll be a. I mean, I think it'll be a combination of surveys, of thought exchange, of in-person meetings and gathering that feedback, face, uh, feed book. Is that a thing? We should invent that.
Please no more social media.
Okay, yeah, feedback, in face-to-face and virtual meetings. So I think it's a combination of all those things.
The audiences would include, though, not just parents, but our students and our teachers as well.
Absolutely, so when we, when we go out to the community now, we're looking at all of those stakeholders and trying to make sure that we're hitting all of those appropriate audiences.
And one other question, if, you know, the Long Range Planning Committee has done amazing work, and I appreciate that we have such a base to start these discussions, what happens if the community says, I see something here that the Long Range Planning Committee didn't consider? But yet, the input is supposed to honor that work or that intent. How does the community, what's going to be the channel that the community can provide that? Is that just in your basic feedback, or is there like a, Sarah would love it if she's here, the parking lot where the information will go, or how does that work?
I mean, we'll definitely collect all their information. And if it's not related, like you said, if it's to the long-range plan, that'll be collected, and then the Long Range Planning Committee will definitely take that input into consideration.
I mean, to give you an example, so when I presented this to the leadership team this morning, we, we had a couple of our folks in the back just writing on a Google Doc, right, of everything that was said and the comments that were made. And so the slide about repurposing CFAC came from a comment that was in this morning. So that slide was different this morning than it ended up tonight because of that, just that simple verbal feedback. So I think there's power in conversations if we pay attention and really record those things and then do something about them. So, and that's just a simple example, right? And then using all those other tools as well, I think.
Because I do see this as a rezoning, but I don't think I see it as just a simple rezoning, and it's the same business as before. Like, there is a whole lot more packed into this rezoning exercise than there was.
I think that's partly true, but to Erin's point earlier, I think it's also not as radical as it may sound. Even though it's affecting a larger part of the district, the actual changes aren't necessarily that radical. And, you know, I think if we can honor the core tenants that we have in the charter, then those are, were determined by the community. I mean, those were the things that the community told us. These are the things that are important to us, and so we're going to try to honor those as much as possible.
All right, so do we need a motion on this tonight?
No, nothing, this is just conversation.
Some brief.
Any other discussion board members? All right, Jimmy, thank you. We'll move on to the Citizens Facility Advisory Committee update. Jimmy, it's you.
This is an interesting one. Since we're sort of punning or positing it, repurposing, however you want to say it. Do we want to go through the entire process, or?
So tell me who we have brought with us today? Do we have folks here who are going to talk to the board? How, what did we end up doing?
What we have are the district leads, and several of them are out. And so we have about three or four people here that could give an update on what they've been doing.
So, so I think unless the board tells us differently, I think we'd like just a brief update on what is the work that they've been doing? And then if they have any feedback specifically now having heard this morning and this evening and the conversations that have surrounded, I think we're, I think the board may be open to hearing from their perspective, because we haven't defined what that looks like yet, the path going forward. So if they have thoughts and ideas, I think we're welcome to hear those tonight. Also knowing that, you know, we're not laying a solid path forward yet, because we think we have to have more conversation about how do we step next.
Exactly. Okay, so we can, I guess, call up.
Okay, so we have five subcommittees, correct?
Six.
Six subcommittees, okay, so pick the first one and let's go.
Let's do high school. Well, he can do ancillary too. You might as well. They're multitasking.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Gearing. So Christine and I have been leading the high school sub, not subcommittee, it is subcommittee meeting over the last few months. We currently have about twenty to thirty members attending regularly each meeting. We have had six meetings up to this point, so we've been very active. We have visited five of our comprehensive high schools. And at our last meeting this past Monday night, we visited New Hope High School. And so we have not visited Glenn High School. We do have a meeting planned at Glenn, but that is after the Thanksgiving break. And so we have been to Vandergriff Vista, Rouse, Leander, and Cedar Park High School. And each one of those, those meetings, we have had an opportunity for either the principal or associate principal of the campus take a tour with our subcommittee to look at different projects that the principals have recommended or district staff have recommended for those campuses. And then sometimes when we're at a campus, we look at a project that has been completed at one of the campuses that may be another project that we want to compete, complete at a future campus. And so the committee members can compare and look at projects. We've also had presentations at each meeting from district staff to talk about some of the things that are important for the committee members to know. And so we've had Kimberly Waltman talk about eighteen plus and special programs. Krista and Matt and Camille talk about our college schools of choice and our CTE programs. Jimmy was there this past week, he and Lori, to talk about capital renewal. And so part of the process is to look at actual projects and then educate the committee members on some of the things that they hear about why we would want a certain project to be at different campuses. And so it's been a very engaged group. They've asked very good questions and actually have five chairs. And so we had multiple people that wanted to be a part of the process and help chair the group. And it's always good to have multiple people there that can support. And so we have very active five chairs that have been doing a good job of helping lead, lead the group.
Middle and Elementary?
No, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I'm also here to represent the elementary and middle school subcommittee teams and give you a similar update. Topic-wise, very much what John just described for high school. At middle school, they visited Leander Middle School, Stiles Middle School, and Running Brushy. The elementary's visited Parkside, Cypress, and West Side. Middle school had about seventeen members and two chairs, Rebecca Harris and Carol Hubbard. Elementary had twenty-nine active members, and chairs were Danielle Ellis and Lisa Black. And so to all of our chairs, given the restructuring tonight, I just want to personally thank each and every one of them, along with the committee members, who have been incredible on this journey so far. And they've done great work and bring up great points, and we would love to continue to have their participation for future, any kind of restructuring conversation, but to have their participation again in terms of community engagement conversations.
I'm just curious, Chris, while you're there at the mic, can you tell me what you think about kind of maybe their interest in that repurpose? Or what, whatever you see are the first thoughts that came to your mind besides, oh, this sounds fun?
They're highly engaged, and I think that they're great financial stewards. So they paid a lot of attention to what is most important for students, but they were also asking, like John mentioned, some in-depth questions about how we finance, what we do in the district, and why, and how many students are impacted by our decisions. And when we look at tiering projects, they wanted to make sure that they were making the right decisions holistically and not from a personal lens. So I just really appreciated their engagement that way. I thought they were a really good group in terms of just being mindful about aspects of education, even if they don't come from the education lens.
I think that they would have the same questions that I think all of us have at this moment. I think we all know that there are needs in our, in our district. And some of those needs are to look at the growth and manage the growth that we know is coming in parts of the district. But they also have dug deeply into the projects at each campus and some of the needs that we know that, that we may have at our, at our campuses that already exist. And I think that will be a major question for them as we step through this. And the work that they do is, how do we make sure that we manage the needs of our current campuses as we look at the future of the district and what's needed for growth? And I think you will see that as some of our campuses are getting older, especially Leander High School and Cedar Park High School. I think that will be a question that the high school committee will continue to ask is, yes, we have to be mindful as the district goes, but we also need to be mindful that our campuses need work. And some of those projects have already been pushed off, and we have to be mindful that that is an impact to our, our current campuses. Also have an update for ancillary. Joey and Brandon are not able to make it this evening. And so I have not attended any of their meetings, but I do know that they have had three meetings over the last few weeks. They have had a chance to visit our support building that's right across the street here and look at some of the needs that are needed there to continue to help our plant services department. And they've also had an opportunity to visit our central transportation department to also, to not look not only at the building and some things that we need to look at for fuel storage, but also have talked about buses and the need for buses. And that's a large amount of buses as we will continue to grow, but also to replace our fleet. And they have visited Grandview Hills Elementary to look at the ancillary buildings there for future storage, possibly a southern transportation facility. And so they have been looking at different projects at our performing arts centers, our district stadiums, and looking at the fleet for not only buses, but our plant services department, our custodial department as they age and meeting the needs at those. And so it's a smaller group, but it's a, I have talked to Brandon multiple times about the group, and they are very engaged and know that there are needs that they continue to look at for our ancillary services. Do you want Brian to come up and talk about security? Yeah.
Evening, Madam President, Dr. Gearing, board members. So I am in the security CFAC subcommittee. We've had four meetings so far. We divided into two pieces. We have facilities strand and then a cyber strand that we're looking at for security purposes. We looked first at the twenty-twenty-one bond recommendations, and then looked at campus and district requests that came out of that. And then we called in district experts, thank you to them, Darla Humes, Russell Bundy, and Jay Watson to help define what those look like and actually what we have existing on campuses. And as far as facilities, TEA has proposed standards. Those standards came out, and we are close with what we think that TEA is going to require of us. There are a couple of things that were new to us, like, for example, the protective film on some of our exterior doors and windows. There's some fencing requirements, some keybox requirements, things like that. Good news is, there's some grants, there's an existing grant that's out now that we've applied for. And then there's some earmark money that's, we don't know the requirements for the grant or the timeline, but it's around those standards that hopefully we'll get and we can use towards that. For the cyber side, we have firewalls, content filters, and recovery equipment that are aligned with those. And so there are some timelines that potentially are associated with these. Again, these are proposed administrative code, and so until we know more, that's where we are with security.
Can I question about security? So when you said there's timelines associated with this, so thinking about what we talked about earlier, about the long-range plan and the timing of all of this stuff. If, if the legislature requires us to do certain things, and there's no money to do it, right? Unfunded mandates, we love those. How do we propose to handle the cost associated with what you're talking about?
Right, so it's, so right now, again, there's grant funding that's coming out that hopefully we can use. We're working with Jimmy on getting a price on what the standards are so that we know better what to expect and whether we can encumber those within or will need to go to bond for those projects. I think the biggest one that we saw are potentially the fencing, which is predominantly in our high schools around courtyard areas, and then the film. We have absolutely no kind of concept of what that might cost, what the square footage is on our existing buildings. Because we got these three weeks ago, I think, is when the standards came out. And so that cost is probably going to be the largest. There are some additional requests that are in for cameras, security cameras, some lighting, some things like that, but we kind of focused as a committee on the standards when they came out to make sure that we were at least aligned there. And then with the grant and timing with the bond, we'll have to see, because they're kind of aligned, and we actually talked about that. We don't want to take potential bond projects out of it until we know more about the funding proposals, but that's the discussion we've had so far.
Have y'all heard any information about the film in regards to fire safety? I was reading about some areas, and school districts in different parts of Texas where their local firefighters union is pushing back on it because it actually creates a fire hazard, where you can't break the window from the outsider inside in case there was a fire. Then you've now created a different security issue in terms of a fire hazard. And so now I've heard some school districts are taking a second to purchase anything because now there's other school districts that are pushing back on it until we find out how this impacts safety in terms of a fire in the classroom. Have you heard anything about that?
I haven't heard that in particular. The requirements talk about exterior doors that have, all of them which require push-button exits or push-door exits, so that piece of it, and then the windows surrounding those doors. So I haven't heard that, but I mean, it's definitely something to consider. And these, again, are proposed. These, I think they go through a public comment section and all of that before they become actual. So that may give feedback there, Jimmy.
And some, I think what you're talking about is some districts have looked at all the exterior windows to do that, and we're not, we're looking at around the doors, yes, right around the doors.
All right, good evening. I've been working with the Information Technology Subcommittee, and we've had four meetings so far. We met at Tarvin, where we had a staff second grader kind of show us around. And we went to Blockhouse Creek after that. Last night, we were at Danielson, and my son Lux, as you guys, you guys met him, he gave us a tour around Danielson and showed us all of the different classrooms and how he used technology at Danielson. So upon first meeting with the committee, we paid special attention to show them the district's strategic plan and talk to them about equitable access. And so what's different from the Technology Subcommittee, I think, from the others, is, you know, we try to do everything district-wide, whereas, you know, some of the other committees do things per campus or per elementary or secondary. So just talking about how everything would be kind of equal. We talked about the twenty-one IT assessment and some of the recommendations that came from that. We talked about student-staff device refreshes. So that's important when we, when we consider what we're going to be doing in the future. So, that's important when we, when we consider what we're going to be doing in the future. IT infrastructure needs as far as wireless and network equipment for the internet and, you know, the, the students' use of that on a daily basis. This one's important, too. We reviewed campus requests. So, there's quite a few principals that put in, Jimmy sent out forms maybe a couple of months ago for all the campuses. And a lot of them on there were discussing the projectors and the hassle and the, you know, some of them aren't working. They needed to be refreshed probably a couple of years ago. But we've got money for flat panels, but we've got no money to install them. And so, those concerns can be easily, easily remedied if we were to further discuss how we're going to do that. So, Carrie Spannigal is my kind of co, co-lead on this. She's fantastic at classroom technology. And she discussed all the bright bytes data, instructional technology support. She kind of explained how, how she does that. The subcommittee members were asking about a lot of questions regarding teachers and how they use the, the technology. So, she created a survey and sent it out. And so, we're, we're waiting on the results of that to come back. So, we also had Camille Clay come and, and talk to the group. So, that's kind of what we've been doing so far.
And I'll ask you the same question earlier. What are your thoughts are, when we talk about repurposing? And what do you think your committee's thoughts will be on this?
So, my, the committee's thoughts, I think, will be, you know, there are some very important items that we should consider with, with pausing everything. I think there's some things that do need to be refreshed, which will affect students in classroom using technology if we don't, you know, meet those needs. And my, my thoughts are, you know, along those same lines. I think there's, there's a lot of districts around us. There was a new principal that we had, and she made comments, you know, that were like, she was shocked at how far behind we are compared to some of the other districts in classroom technology. And so, I think over the last ten or fifteen years, I've got a, one of the slides that I shared with our subcommittee members. We, we haven't really kept up with technology as, as a whole, classrooms or infrastructure or wireless. There's a lot of pockets of wireless in every single campus. I'm sorry, pockets of no wireless connectivity and no wireless signal in every campus. And the, the IT assessment showed, showed us that in a heat map. So, we need to, I guess, adjust accordingly. There's campuses that are having class in different parts of, of the building that weren't typically, I don't know, designed for that, I guess, on the wireless side. So, there's, there's a lot of need. We can, we can pause, and I think, I don't know, I think the, the items that should be addressed will bubble to the top. We can, we can prioritize, however, but there are some refresh items that I think are, are important to discuss, I guess.
So, I would say from the security standpoint, we can't go fast enough. I mean, they, they want to implement as many of the security measures as quickly as we can. And I think, you know, TEA's timeline and along with those are kind of in line with each other. So, the more we can do for security, the better.
Real quick question on the, the technology side. So, one thing that we definitely need to make sure that we get out to our community is that when, when portions of a bond don't pass, this is the situation we're put in. And when we are, when we pass certain things to buy things and then don't have the way to implement them, because the way the state requires us to write those bond propositions is that there's consequences. And so, ultimately, the kids are the ones that, kids and the teachers are the ones that have to suffer through that just simply by making a statement or whatever it was that they were trying to do. So, my hope is that what we can do is, is get us up to speed, because, you know, hearing that we're that far behind, being the district that we are, that bothers me a lot. I think that, that's something that we, we definitely need to make sure that the public is fully aware of, of how far behind we are in certain things. I understand the, the safety and security thing is going to be mandated by the state, and that's something we, we can't do, but, or we can't not do, I should say. But understanding that we have, we purchased the things and now we can't install them. So, people need to understand that there's ramifications when we, when we pick and choose what we want to support. But ultimately, it's our, it's our kids and our teachers that end up suffering.
So, I had a question, I guess it's for Jimmy. Right, you know, with the CFAC going on and the different subcommittees, we still have booster clubs and we saw PTAs putting in a facility improvement request. There's been a lot of chatter about it where individuals are getting that denied letter and saying that should be in the bond. Can we get some clarification on what, how this facility improvement request or working with CFAC? And how do we make sure that we're not denying access to these organizations that are just trying to improve their school?
I am definitely working, I worked with plant services that actually receives the FIRs. And we've had very clear discussions about, we're not denying any projects. We do let them know that if, for some reason, they want to do a project and it gets on the bond, that's still their project, and they can move forward, but they won't get reimbursed. And so, because if once the subcommittees actually go through the process and include certain things, we're not going to come add their projects back in. But we do, I think we want to be transparent and let them know it's being discussed. And that's what we're trying to do is make them aware. If they want to hold off, that's their choice. But if they want to move forward, we won't stop them.
I think that's a separate conversation then we'll have with you, because I think we're getting, we're all receiving a lot of input from different boosters right now about items that have already been purchased and they don't intend to get reimbursed. And so, separately, I'd like to understand that process better so that way, when parents reach out to us, we can answer those questions.
I'd like to second Gloria, if we could possibly have a discussion on that, because it has come up. I mean, I know as an ex-PTA president, I know that hassle and frustrations and just tons of hoops we have to jump through. And I think if we're going to truly do this community input with our long-range plan, I think this is a discussion that needs to be had.
So, to clarify, we're not talking about a Friday memo? Discussion on FIR, is that what we want a discussion on?
No, in here.
I'm, yeah, discussion, agenda item on FIR, is that what y'all? Okay, I'm just looking for head nods. Okay, yes, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, thank you. I would like to get more details, and I know y'all would like more details as well, on the whole repurposing of CFAC. As y'all start these discussions or continue these discussions, I think start is probably a better way to say them right now. One, I'm so grateful for now our community experts that have given so much time and who are very aware of the needs in our community and on our campuses and have spent so much time doing this. I, I hope we can continue to utilize them and their, their voice and the work that they've done to really kind of get that community input as we're looking at what these next steps are. I'm also curious, and, and you don't need an answer tonight, but I'd like to see, how does this repurpose look when we start looking at, you know, building a campus is something different than looking at tech needs or security needs or meeting current maintenance needs. And so, I think there's some differences, too, that may fall out here. And we're talking about repurpose or what those next steps look like. So, I'm looking forward to hearing sooner rather than later kind of what this vision is for how we purposely and intentionally move forward. And I realize Dr. Gearing is being very vulnerable to say, hey, we talked about this this morning, here we go. And y'all haven't had time to talk to CFAC yet. But I do look forward to hearing maybe a, a future agenda item, kind of what these conversations were had at, with your CFAC and kind of where we're at after that at some point, coming up one of our future meetings.
Are we going to hear from the CFAC members that are here tonight, as Dr. Gearing mentioned?
Do we have CFAC here tonight?
We were having the district leads tonight as the co-chairs were going to be presenting tomorrow night to the steering committee. And so, that's still up for discussion if we're going, how we're going to move forward. And so, we've got to have quick discussions and conversations.
I have, regarding security, you mentioned security cameras for the facilities. Is that something that comes under the umbrella of the grants that you're expecting? And really, nothing is going to happen until the TEA standards are made final?
So, the, those are mentioned, they're not part of the standards. What we're expecting of those grant funds is to meet the standards first. And then if there is money left, then that was, security cameras were actually mentioned and there is some other options to consider. But our, the committee had actually already discussed, we have some use of life for updating cameras, existing, adding additional cameras, those kinds of things. So, the grant money has to be used for the standards prior to being able to use any additional money for other security measures that we might want.
And if there's insufficient grant money then, leftover, then, no cameras?
Well, so, that's kind of where we are with bond. So, if we, once we price out the requests, get a better understanding of the grant funding and how we can spend that, then if the remainder would go towards a bond request to provide those cameras. But the committee does want security cameras. The campuses actually requested security cameras, so that's on the committee for consideration.
Thanks. Board members, any other questions? All right, thank y'all so much. Jimmy, this demographer report that we have, I know sometimes we upload it to our district site. Will it be uploaded?
It is uploaded.
The, the full report is? Okay, good. And Dr. Gearing, before we wrap up our discussion items for this evening, do you have anything else to add or anything to help kind of put an idea for what next steps might look like?
So, just appreciate your time and attention. I know this is an additional meeting, and so I think it was worthwhile for us to come together and have this extended conversation. I think what I was looking for tonight was some direction in terms of, of the recommendations that we've laid out. And so, having heard the conversation, I think we have a pretty clear idea about how we step forward in terms of vision. And now, the job that we have to do is go and execute that. And so, we will go have those conversations, start doing that work, and then continue to bring back updates to the board as we go.
All right, seeing nobody else reaching for their mic, and we have concluded our agenda items. There's nothing else before us. If there is no further objection, we will adjourn at 9:13 this evening. Thank you, board members, and administration, Dr. Gearing.